Folks, let's bring our meeting to order. November ninth trustee meeting, we're going to say the pledge of allegiance.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you folks. Roll call please.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse. Mayor for Tim Knutson.
Here.
Mayor Hammond.
Here. Amendments to the agenda. I know we probably might have one, but go ahead.
So I think that there was discussion when we initially tabled the resident resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-two today. After that motion was approved, we found out that one of our board members was not going to be here and had had the request to move that to a future meeting. So I know there's been discussion about moving that either to the fourteenth of December, or my thought was potentially to our meeting, special meeting potentially happening next week. But I don't know if we want to move that now or later.
Thought? Doesn't matter. Want to do it sooner than later?
Sure.
Add it on to the next meeting? Add it on the next meeting, get it knocked out.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll make it happen. Thank you.
Yeah, that's item four, resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-two-one. It's off the agenda tonight. Anything else?
Yes, so we'll be, so the mo-
Yeah, we'll-
Can we do a formal motion?
Yeah.
Um, to move it, please.
The witch tea.
To November sixteenth.
Motion, we move resolution.
We haven't called the special.
Oh.
Yet, so yeah, so yes, this is, we're doing this.
The agenda item.
Leave this item on the agenda for the four, uh, for number four, once you get to it, you'll have already-
It'll move it.
Called the special meeting and you move it at that time.
Okay, and that's for December sixteenth, right? So I don't have to do this again.
November.
November sixteen. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments, ventures tonight? No. Nope. All right. Public comment time. This is, uh, the point where we let individuals in the public, we wish to speak on non-agenda items, come up to the podium and you'll be given three minutes to speak on a non-agenda item and please state your name and address for the record and we'd love to hear from you. So if anyone out here want to talk? Okay. We're in action items. Our first action item tonight is a resolution number thirty-two, twenty-two-one, resolution regarding approval of Colorado opioids settlement memorandum and understanding. Mr. Sapienza.
Dan Sapienza, March and Olive Town Attorney. Um, I'm sharing on the screen, the Colorado opioid settlement MOU PowerPoint that was included in your packet. This PowerPoint presentation was put together by the Colorado Attorney General's Office. So I am not going to go through every detail of it. There's a lot of information in your packet. Both wording on this PowerPoint as well as a summary, an FAQ, uh, eighty-page MOU. There's a lot of information you need to gather, so I'm just going to go really high level here. But I thought this was a good way of kind of organizing the information. What we're asking, excuse me. What is before you today is an MOU between the Colorado Attorney General's Office and local governments all around the state of Colorado. This is part of the settlement of the national opioid litigation. Wellington did not join in that litigation, but Laramie County did. Greeley took part in that as well as a lot of other municipalities and counties around the state of Colorado. In settling that, the Attorney General's Office has negotiated that the more local governments participate in this statewide agreement, the more money the state of Colorado will get. So what we're asking for, or what they're asking for is to agree to give up to the rights of the town of Wellington to sue opioid distributors, specifically these big three that are listed here, as well as Johnson and Johnson. In exchange for that, the town of Wellington will get, will receive from the settlement, a certain amount of local government share of dollars. And also will get to participate in a regional governance structure for use of a substantial amount of state and regional dollars from this settlement for opioid abatement throughout the community. In order to receive these funds, a certain number of local governments need to sign off, Wellington's included because we are one of the local governments of a population of over ten thousand. So, good for us. Approved uses of the settlement funds, Laramie County will receive these funds as well as each of every municipality that participates and signs this MOU. Including Wellington, these can be used for a specific set of approved purposes, which are detailed in the MOU. They have to be related to opioid abatement. They can range from treatment to law enforcement to prevention to naloxone provision. There's a, about four pages of things that this, these funds can be used for. The funds will be distributed, um, some to the state, some to local governments, like specifically to Wellington directly. Um, and then most of the funds will go to regional governance structures and then for us, that regional governance is part of Laramie County. It's Laramie County, Fort Collins, Loveland, and the town of Wellington are the four voting members of the regional governance entity that will control how sixty percent, or how this, how our share of this sixty percent of the funds will be used. It's kind of a breakdown of how that goes. We're still working on that. So right now, this is part, uh, signing an MOU with the state and kind of agreeing to participate in this by signing the MOU, Wellington is saying, we're giving up our rights to sue in the future. We'd like to participate and we want to make sure that those funds come here. The next step is we're working with, um, our region to figure out exactly how this voting process works. But yeah, right now, we're talking about one vote for Laramie County, one vote for Fort Collins, one vote for Loveland, one vote for Wellington, and then one vote for, um, Laramie County's Behavioral Health Department, Public Health Department, Community Corrections Department, kind of, we're figuring out exactly where this fifth vote comes in. So Laramie County essentially will get two votes. They will be the fiscal agent. And that second vote will be a professional from kind of, uh, somebody involved in opioid treatments. So, not exactly one vote per is what we're talking about right now, but close. And Wellington gets to join that. The reason Wellington is there with a population of just over ten thousand with these large municipalities is ten thousand is the cutoff for signing onto this MOU. So Berthitt and Estes Park are fall below that ten thousand limit. So they didn't make the cut. So because we hit that mark, um, we are integral part of this regional governance structure and, uh, we're going to be part of it. I think you should. Every time I talk to the town attorney in Estes, I bring it up. So there'll be a statewide councils to talk about how the abatement dollars will be used. The local government share will be decided by the local government. Um, and there is an option if Wellington decides not to take these funds and distribute them how the town of Wellington wants to for these approved purposes, the funds can actually just be sent directly to the regional governance structure, which Wellington also gets a say on. So, there's a few ways how this can be used depending on how we find, how the board finds the best way to distribute the dollars. The total percent that comes to local government will be twenty percent, region, sixty percent of the dollars will go to the regional governments. Those are the regions. Sorry, skipping ahead here. Part of this that we are not participating in is attorney fees and expenses as part of the debate about this MOU that you may hear out there. This is for the municipalities and counties that actually participated in the litigation. They're trying to recoup the money that they spent to bring the litigation, which brought the settlement. Of course, we did. As part of this, there are four documents we're asking that you pass the resolution for the mayor to be able to sign. One is the MOU itself. Second piece is the subdivision settlement participation form regarding the Johnson and Johnson claims. The third is the subdivision settlement participation form regarding the distributors claims. And the fourth is the Colorado subdivision Esco agreement. And what this says is basically none of this goes into effect unless ninety-five percent of Colorado local governments participate. And the reason ninety-five percent limit is there is because that's just part of the settlement agreement that if we can hit ninety-five percent, the state of Colorado receives more funding. So, um, there's kind of a trigger that at that point, that's when this will go into effect. The timeline for funding distribution is likely to begin in July twenty-two, somewhere in that range. Funds for these settlements that we're currently talking about, probably to the state of Colorado will be about three hundred million dollars. For Laramie County and the regional governance structure, there's going to be about twenty million dollars-ish. For, uh, Wellington, the town of Wellington itself as part of that local government share, realistically, probably about a hundred thousand dollars over ten years. Kind of Wellington, because of the population, receives point three-six percent of that or something like that. So, but like I said, we'll be able to participate in that regional governance structure, deciding how that larger pot of money is spent. This structure, the regional governance, the MOU also is expected to, um, cover future settlements. There's the Purdue Pharmaceutical bankruptcy, um, that'll be a large settlement. And so the goal is to incorporate all of these opioid litigation pieces into this. And, uh, so this is just the beginning of all this. You have any questions?
Questions?
So I said a couple of questions and I think you mentioned that we currently are not taking part in any litigation. Is that correct as the town?
That's correct.
Okay. And then are we aware of any individual cases ongoing in the town or would this settlement have any impact on an individual resident of Wellington's ability to bring suit?
This settlement is purely the town of Wellington as a government entity. This MOU is in particular about that. Individual, individuals in the town of Wellington may already be participating in litigation. They may already be participating in the Purdue bankruptcy. In fact, I would guess that there probably are individuals participating and this settlement or this MOU has nothing to do with that.
Got it. Okay. So if someone were to come up in the town of Wellington and say, hey, I as an individual want to take these companies to court, this will have no bearing on their case at all.
Yes.
Okay. Nope, those were the only questions I had. Thank you.
Twenty million, what the county is going to get.
Everybody, that is a very approximate number based on three hundred million dollars going statewide and kind of the state's breakdown. So roughly twenty million. Probably. Over ten years. So, Wellington receives, as I said, point three percent, twenty-six percent of that twenty percent. So it's a-
All right.
But we put that money together with the twenty million that's going to the region and Wellington gets that one in five vote. Wellington can get to have a really, that vote and that regional governance structure can have a really important voice in making sure that those dollars are spent here.
No doubt about that. That's a big deal because you don't get that at the behavioral health. It's no different. Um, okay. I have no further questions. Go ahead. If you got one.
I, I know in the document it talked about the people being appointed to those local governments. And it specifically spoke to people that have experience within that. Now, I don't know if that applies to the smaller or if that was just on a larger scale body. So how, what would that look like in terms of our ability to put someone on to that council? Is there, are they going to have to have prior experience in opioids and things like that?
The political language in the MOU regarding voting members of the regional governing body, which is the five-member board to control our regional dollars. Those voting members must be employees or elected officials of the participating local government. So this board will appoint who, who goes there. They don't have to have experience in that field. They actually have to be employees or one of you. I think when it talks about experience, that's actually the statewide abatement, I believe.
Yes, I think it was. I don't think that was the local. That's why I was asking.
In, in addition to the five voting members or however many voting members that ended up being on this regional council, um, there also will be non-voting members from pulling from treatment providers from all sorts of places with traumatic amounts of experience in this area. So.
Okay. No other questions? Go ahead and open up for public comment. Anybody from public like to talk about this issue? Come on up.
My name is Director Westall. I hadn't accessed any of those documents, but I'm just wondering if the monies that are, uh, whatever they turn out to be. What if they are not used for specific things required in that agreement? They go back to the, somewhere.
But I think they're going to have to be used.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be, that's how it works with behavioral health. They gotta use it.
Yeah.
Grant funding, all kinds of things, right? Dan, I don't know about this.
And then my second question is, if that's the case and we have to use those and we set up however we're going to use it, then is that going to result in a permanent position that the town has to pay somebody for over that length of time? Because that kind of could cost us more than we're getting.
Absolutely. I, I, I bet we don't know any of that. The MOU is not even established yet.
Yeah.
It's what you're, what we're asking you. So I can answer a couple of these questions.
Very tall, okay. Yes.
Uh, the MOU details, uh, in several places how the local government or the regional government needs to report the use of those funds to the statewide, uh, abatement council. So on an annual basis, the use of the funds has to be reported to make sure that it complies with the acceptable or approved uses that are listed in the MOU. It's going to be about a hundred thou- my very, very rough estimate, do not quote me on this number. My, is a hundred thousand dollars over ten years or, or more. Um, that's really not enough funds to bring on a full-time position, but it's definitely expected within this that this, these monies will be used. Not necessarily by the town of Wellington, but the town of Wellington provides those funds to schools, to nonprofits. Um, it lists a number of organizations that will be, that, that can use those funds. So the town of Wellington would receive them. Then dole them out to community partners, make sure that, making sure that they're being used for approved uses. So I think that, uh, rather than hiring somebody to do that, that would be the case.
Okay, there it is. Any other comments from public? Good question, sir. Thank you. Okay. Anything else further, Dan and Adonis? Nope. It's a good, it's a good program. No other further questions. I'll seek a motion to approve this resolution. Anyone to take stab at?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number thirty-two, twenty-two-one, a resolution regarding approval of Colorado opioid settlement memorandum of understanding.
Second. We get a roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, item two, uh, budget review, presentation from Ms. Judy Tippett. How are you?
Good. Good evening. So, do a quick review of, uh, about the last month of where we started. So back in the very beginning of October, we all met and shared most of a Saturday together. Uh, so that was when we heard from all of the departments. Um, and that's really what, where we started the process and that's important to realize because it is not, uh, the work of just the finance department. Every single department head contributes hours and hours, uh, to try to get this information put together. And so following that, we brought this for the first time to the board on the twelfth. Some of our numbers, we continue to get better information and we bring those to you. Then the following week, we had the Bonanza and then, um, on October twenty-sixth, we did a presentation regarding the American Recovery Funds and the permissible uses for that. So here we are tonight, um, and I'm going to, uh, run through the numbers again, um, and noting some of the changes that we have made. When we, uh, last spoke, we didn't have the, uh, we had just been awarded the Main Street, open for business grant, which was five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and, uh, the packets had already gone out. So the numbers you see tonight, uh, the thirteen million, uh, for the projected revenues, that includes that money that would be coming in. And on the expenditure side, you also see that that fifteen, it's only about fifteen point eight million. Um, that will include those expenditures as well. So that will, we will act as a passer on that fairly quick-moving program on that. They're hoping those funds are expended in June. So as we continue to work through that, we want to make sure that we're set up to assist them with those funds. So we have about three point nine million dollars in capital projects, um, programmed in for the general fund. And we have about a little over a million dollars. We are planning on paying off the debt and that is that park loan that was taken out in two thousand and fourteen. So this will result in us dipping into our fund balance by about two point seven million dollars. And then just as a reminder to everyone at the end of your packet, the CIP, um, it's quite lengthy, um, but the new projects, just so you can remind yourself, not just the projects that are going to be done this year, but the new projects to the capital improvement program, we've highlighted those in green. So if you've seen some of them before, the green ones are new this year. And then for the personnel, and again, um, we have spoke, um, before, but I really do think that our biggest asset, it doesn't show up on our depreciation schedule, but those are employees. We are a service industry. And so we are asking for six point five five positions to be added. That will bring us up to sixty. Um, then we add in our law enforcement of ten point five. Um, and the reason that's important is we add all of these numbers together and we like to look at it as a percentage of our total expenditures. And so we will be at about the thirty-eight point zero nine percent, uh, industry standard for state and local governments is at fifty-three point five nine percent. So we are well below that. So I think it's always important to have some, you know, some measurement of how we are doing in relation to, um, others, other local governments. Just a reminder, sales tax is looking excellent. Um, currently we have two percent and that goes, uh, into the government funds. Um, and then the one percent, we had the election results. They won't be final until November twelfth. Don't have any reason to think that anything else, but until we get that final, um, on there, that, um, that will continue to be shared with hard surface, soft surfaces, meaning streets and parks. And so as a reminder, for this year, we have that one percent all showing inside of the streets funds. And that's because in the past, uh, we had shown more of that into the parks. And so the streets have got a lot of large projects. And so again, um, in the twenty-twenty-two proposed budget that is showing in the street fund, for twenty-twenty-one, um, the general fund, these numbers, we haven't changed since, uh, we did our retreat. Uh, we had originally programmed one point eight, um, for sales tax to come in. And, um, it looks like we're going to be over the two million dollar number. And again, being very conservative, we're going to estimate three percent. If this, if we continue to track well, uh, I'd much rather be in front of you asking for permission instead of going back, um, and having those hard conversations with department heads and looking for, um, money that we would have to cut out of the budget. And so, um, briefly, I'm going to revisit the water and the sewer. Um, those are our big funds. All of the other departments are included in your packet. Certainly if you have information or I'm sorry, questions, I'm, I would have to provide that information. But revisiting the water fund, we're anticipating nine point nine in revenues. Three point two of that is going to be restricted into your raw water. So that comes in, shows us a revenue, but we can't, um, it goes down below, is restricted. Later, um, after this, I'm going to ask for a motion. So as we visited with, um, about the American Recovery Funds, one of the permissible uses, it has been out there, continues to be out there, is the infrastructure for water sewer and broadband. And so, um, after we finish up here, we're going to ask for a motion and permission to use that. Let's see what else. So we're also anticipating pulling about, uh, ten point six on our water loan. And so that would bring us up with our expenditures. Oh, I gracious that we're going to be, um, almost at twenty million dollars, but that is that plant that's coming online, uh, lots and lots of moving pieces there. And then, um, the final pieces are debt services about one point five. Just as a reminder, um, we do have some of those that are getting very near, um, the end of their life on those, uh, the loans. We have one. It's twenty-twenty-four that will pay off on that one. And inside of the sewer fund, we're anticipating just short of four million dollars in revenues. We're anticipating pulling about twelve million from the loan that we are in the process of working through, uh, for the state of Colorado. That's that SRF loan. Expenditures are expected to be right at about sixteen point five and that includes fourteen million. And again, majority of that is the construction of the new plant. Um, and then the debt services, it's just a little bit over half a million dollars. So the next steps, uh, next week, um, provided we get, um, permission is we will be back with you and we will formalize all of these requests, um, with ordinances and then, um, adopting our budget for twenty-twenty-two. So, there's any questions from the board? And then we, um, would like to take public comment and also ask for a motion, um, with permission to use those inside of the water, water fund for the construction of the new plant.
The questions over here? You want to go elsewhere first? Got questions over here? You got your floor.
So the first thing I wanted to come back to, and I know this is something that we've discussed a lot in terms of just the expenses. So I'll try to break it down into categories. So the first question I had is in the water, um, it looks like in essence, we're expecting revenues to just about double for water sales. What's driving that?
So for the water sales, tell me what page you're on.
Correct. One second here.
And if not, I may need to, um, respond with an email, but let me see what I can do.
I can give you the page in just a second. It's going to be about one eighty-seven. The revenue, let me see which one it says it's doubling. So it's going to be about one, I think, ninetieth, I believe where it says the increase are one ninety-two. Yeah, so it's going to be page one hundred and ninety. As it says, charges for service, budget of year-end fiscal year twenty-two-one, two point five nine four million. Fiscal year twenty-two, adopted budget, five point seven five two million percentage change, one hundred and twenty-two percent. So I'm just curious as to what are we attributing that massive jump in our projected water sales to? Because last time I checked, we have not approved any other rate changes. So unless we're expecting water treatment to double, which I've been told we can't support, I'm a little confused as to where that difference is coming in.
So I'm still trying to find your, my page number and your page number. Sorry.
Sorry, it's the water, right at the water fund.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry. I have budget, I'm sorry, have budget numbers. So let me, um, answer you via email. I want to make sure I have absolute detail on this. Um, so, yep, let me.
Okay, uh, that's that's a massive change.
Yep, and I don't want to answer off the top, um,
Okay.
of my head without looking at my detail ledger.
Okay. And then I guess there's just several things that I'm looking at is, we're currently, we have tripled water base rates over the last year and a half on residents. I'd like to see us try to reduce some of the things in the budget. So some examples, I see we're paying ten thousand dollars for hydrant meters for one thousand dollars worth of projected sales. I think that's something we should hold off on. Um, we've got twelve thousand five hundred dollars budgeted for small tools, twenty thousand dollars for first aid and safety kits. We've got sixty thousand dollars for professional services. That would like to see if we can hold off on some of these things. It might not be much, but if we can cut pieces out here and there, we can do with less, just like we're asking our residents to. Um, we also have travel and training. I think this needs to be cut really across the board. Um, we have fourteen thousand dollars in our water fund that's budgeted for travel and training. And then I'm also curious as to, we have PPE for seventy-five hundred dollars, um, why that is such a large expense when our prior years were about seven hundred dollars. Um, as to why that's so high. And then also the question, we do currently have a water attorney retained. Can we pay that attorney out of the general fund rather than taking that out of the restricted enterprise fund? For that fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and I'm going to visit with Patty, but I'm going to say we need to work in tandem with our public works director, Bob.
Okay.
And we'll get answers to a lot of, um, again, this is all of the department heads coming together, um, with their requests and then we put them together. With their requests and then we put them together and we compile them. So let us get, and we will answer you and send out an email to the entire board tomorrow.
Okay, I will email these over because I've got similar questions for sewer. And then I would like a breakdown of these transfers to general fund. My understanding from the enterprise funds was these were to help cover with. Administrative staffing and general administration that affects the entire things, but we have just in the three enterprise funds roughly two million dollars. Coming into our general fund out of those. So I would like to get a breakdown of what exactly are we using these transfer funds for? Because it's obviously for a lot more than just administrative staff salaries and benefits. Because obviously with our water plant, they don't use town hall, they use their property. So I really like to know what exactly is it that are being paid for with these transfers? Because there's a lot of money coming out of our enterprise funds. And I mean, it's eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our sewer fund, almost a million dollars out of our water fund. Our drainage fund, which has very little revenue, is about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So it's a lot of money that's getting pulled out of those. And I'd like to see a breakdown as to what that's going towards. Because I don't think I have a good understanding of what it's for.
Okay, we will. We did a very hard look at those numbers, so we will get you the detail.
Okay, I would appreciate getting the detail on that.
Yep, if you have any questions, we'll get on first thing in the morning.
And then the other things is again, travel and training. I think we had between all of them, we about hundred and four thousand dollars budgeted for travel and training. Especially again, dealing with all the things we're dealing with. I don't think that's a good place for us to be spending money right now. And then I do still have concerns about adding the business liaison position. As well as adding, I think we also need to hold off on the new positions within the sewer and water plants for another year. To give us a little bit more time to get on the fund. So I will put all of this together in an email and send that over. But I do have several concerns and it's a lot of money. It adds up fast. And then, oh, sorry, the other thing, the board outreach. I think that we need to keep that to what it has been in the past. And I know this is something that we as a board have to decide on, but I don't think we should be adding an additional. Organizations and funds to what we're doing. We have enough things that we need to pay for right now. I don't think we should be adding in other organizations that we're funding. So for, I think we should just keep that to what we have priorly done with the Main Streets Program and the Eagles After Hours and then save other times for future. Because that's again, quite a bit of money. And then I'd also like to know what were the board discretionary funds used for? Because I did see that. We have that budgeted to come out, I believe, at. It's saying we had expended this year roughly forty two thousand dollars projected. I'm just not aware of what those funds were used for. So if we get a breakdown of what those have been utilized for as to whether or not we need to have that at sixty one thousand dollars.
Absolutely. We talked a little bit, some of those numbers came out of the retreat and they were fireworks and lighting and new Christmas lights, so.
Okay, if we just get a breakdown, that would be great. Because I just was trying to remember what those were used for.
Absolutely.
That's all I got.
All right, well, that was quite a bit. You're gonna email everything. That's a lot to think about. Good stuff though. But we're also having another meeting on this budget.
Well, the next meeting is to approve the budget, Mayor. That's why I'm bringing these concerns up, because this next meeting is not designed for us to hammer this out and make changes. The next meeting is for us to approve it.
No, and that was the intent, no, and the intent is for us to approve it at the next meeting. But the intent was to have, we have provided the budget to you all for months in advance to provide these comments and questions. To, so we wouldn't back up into the meeting before to have to address the questions. So now we're. We'll do what we can, but the intent of having the retreat, we had a budget presentation was at the last meeting. And so we aren't, I'm just, I'm, I was trying to facilitate this so that we wouldn't back up against the meeting. That we had to adopt it at. So we're back here again. So we'll bring it to you to the next meeting. That's why we're holding this special meeting is to adopt the budget. But if we, for some reason, cannot, if the board is not comfortable with that. Then we can put it off to the December fourteenth meeting. It's cutting it close. With our budget requirements, but like I said, I was trying, I was trying really hard to work backwards and it didn't, it didn't work.
We had a retreat, we went through everything, we made a lot of changes, we did a lot of things. Any comments over here?
I appreciate trustee Gator's concerns, but all of the issues or adjustments that I had relative to the budget have been addressed. I am comfortable with moving forward.
Got to draw him anything? Okay, get her your stuff, okay, and then send it around.
I will send it out and just, I want to make you aware of it. At this time, I'm not comfortable with this budget. So that's again, I'm one voice on the board, so if the rest of the board decides otherwise. But if we are to move forward with the budget as it stands today, this is not a budget I'm going to approve. So.
Get our comments and let's see if we can't, if we see a big, a big X mark out there.
Absolutely. And we, and we can work on these, these comments tomorrow, once we get them from trustee Gator and send it out to the trustees. And if, and if there's a huge concern, then absolutely. Absolutely. And, and tonight was the night for the public to provide comments as well. So we wanted to hear from them. We, and so if we needed to make some adjustments based on their comments, we could do that as well. So this was supposed to be our wrap up night, but maybe not. So we'll, we'll give it our best shot.
But I'm always about, you know, hey, if you catch something at the last minute, you know.
Yep. Things happen.
Be able to respond. This is not new information from the retreat to the Bonanza to the. So hopefully, I mean, we have the information. I just am not prepared to answer all of those this evening, so.
You need, you need to have all your files and everything to do that.
So, and then public comment, if we could, pretty please.
So if anybody in the public would like to come up and talk about the budget and has a good time, come on up.
Hi there, Sherelle Teets, four five two five Ingalls Drive. Do you want me to sign this as well? Okay. All right, so Sherelle Teets, I sat through your guys' budget meeting when you went through and walked through. A lot of these questions and there was a lot of questions that you guys had. And it's interesting to sit through and see they are responding very well to the questions you guys had asked. There were a few questions I'd never heard back on and kind of sitting through meetings and stuff like that, hadn't heard reports of. One was your recreation question. How their salaries were increasing, but the amount of programs offering were decreasing. That was kind of a concern, considering you guys are sitting at fifty four point something employees now. So you definitely have to be looking at ADA title when you're accounting for ARO activities. So it, we haven't, you don't have any activities for kiddos with disabilities. So I would say that is definitely something to look at when you're increasing salaries but decreasing what's being offered. The other question was, it came up when you guys were looking at getting rid of vehicles and removing vehicles. One of the things that popped into my head, just because I do this with the company that we have, is tracking for vehicles. So maintenance logs and stuff like that, if there is accountability for employees taking care of these vehicles. Is there a reason why they're wearing out so quickly? If they are wearing out quickly or more quickly than expected. Kind of how you guys are handling the tracking for vehicles and if it's mal maintenance that might be causing some issues. The other thing that I also noticed was Main Streets request for eighty two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for hosting six events. I realize they do some pretty awesome things for the mains, for Wellington and their project area. How it's outlined. But at the same time, if we're having to pull funds from a budget that's supposed to have excessive funds in it. And from a quote, Main Streets has been in account since twenty fourteen. They are their own nonprofit entity. So I'm not seeing where the town is offering other nonprofits, other than Boys and Girls Club, to step up and request additional funding. And how that's kind of getting handled if you guys are doing requests for additional funding. I know that it was sent to me in a message from Callie Cooper. When I had asked her why they weren't utilizing the funds they raised for the, all of these events. For their nonprofit. And she said that they have a choice on how they choose to and they get to give it back to the community, which is great. But not when you have a budget that's in the negative. So you're increasing your request for funds while. The town doesn't have oodles of funds to give out right now. The building department per se needs another employee. I can't even tell you how many times that we have been emailing, emailing, emailing. Not a lot of people are answering their falls, their calls when they're working from home. And I know that the staff there is great, but they don't have enough of it. So I think that adding on new employees for economic development. Until you figure out the business side of permitting requests for what fire department wants, what the town wants. Hiring another Michelle Vance, who is amazing, she just didn't have those supports behind her. To support businesses coming into town, because there really is not a lot of structure. Involved in a business wanting to come and open up. I know four that have backed away from Wellington in general. Because of the processes too complicated. There's not a lot of answers, things get changed all the time. So I think honestly, if you're going to be investing funds in developing the economy. You guys need to start at the building department and give them as much support as they need. To lay out a plan, next year, do an economic development person, when they have that plan in place. Then they can take off running. You're gonna hit a wall every time you try and send an economic development person into an area where there's not a good plan in place. So that would be my kind of recommendations is some of those funds. If Main Streets, like Kelly Cooper said, they can support themselves, they choose not to, they choose to give the funds away. Let them start saving their own funds. They've been in open since twenty fourteen and are still solely relying on almost all town of Wellington taxpayer dollars. So if they're their own nonprofit, they would eventually, I would think, want to aim towards being their own nonprofit and supporting themselves. And not relying so heavily on, you could hire two employees with the amount of funds they're requesting. So that's a concern to me. Other than that, I admire all of you guys that sit through those Saturday meetings. That's a long meeting to go through and a lot to have to look at and discuss. So I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Chalet, seventy four twenty four Home Stretch Drive. I guess I, let me sign. Not good at molding, multitasking this late at night. So. First off, thank you for all that you guys do. I do appreciate you. Many of you, I've had an opportunity to talk to at the Budget Bonanza. I sit on the Citizen Roundtable for the sewer rates. And I very much love this town. My husband and I chose to move here. We didn't move here because we had to. I'm a Colorado native. And I also sit on the Budget Advisory Committee for Pooter School District. So reading through the large, long document is not new to me, just new numbers for new reasons. And I want to say, trustee Gator, I very much appreciate all of the questions that you asked. Those were a lot of the same questions that I have. I hear from my fellow community members daily through Facebook, email, phone calls, even though my phone number is not public. Which is fine, you know, I put it out there on Facebook that I was concerned. I broke down a lot of the things. I spent hours and hours and hours poring over that budget. I don't have the time to always be in meetings. I saw way too many boards. I own my own business. I have lots of kids. But what I will say is, one of the major concerns I have is on the sewer project, projected budget. That number is going up. I am wondering if the projected number is based on an assumed sewer rate increase. Which is foolish. We've only met one time for, to make our recommendation. I think it's unfortunate that our recommendation comes after the budget will be adopted. But with that said, on top of everything that you pointed out, I would like to remind all of you that are sitting here, that are elected. That you were chosen to take care of our money and take care of our town. And there isn't a resident in this town that is okay with paying more at this point. My water bill with massive conservation is a hundred and twenty dollars a month. I have five people in my house. I'm at the minimum rate I can have. That is not the case for retired people living here. And for young families who are struggling, we're a struggling family. I have a kid with autism. So we can't work eighty hours a week, both my husband and I, and live life to the fullest. We watch every single dollar. There can't be frivolous spending in this town right now. We need to prioritize what's most important. And what's most important is the residents here. And we need to be looking out for them and looking out for that extra sixty dollars can be the difference between medicine and not medicine. Okay, so I appreciate that you asked a lot of questions and I'm not passing judgment on anyone. I watch a lot of these meetings online. I made a point to be here tonight. But I'm gonna ask you, do not just go pass this budget next week without getting answers, without more discussion. Without maybe looking at not buying a front end loader right now. I understand why they want it, but we've done okay without it for now. If we have a big blizzard, we can rent a front end loader. I can hook you up. I work in construction. They're not doing anything in a blizzard. But we can't spend seven hundred thousand when you're asking a group of citizens. To make a sewer rate increase recommendation on the recommendation that that's what we're gonna do. When we're talking about thinking outside the box and we've had lots of conversations even outside of that. Meeting that we had last week and we meet again tomorrow. But take care of our money. Because when, in that budget thing, one of the first pages is the organizational chart. And I will remind you to notice that the residents of this town are the number one leader of this town. So no judgment, because I don't know you guys enough to know. But what I'm asking you need to do is take a hard look, see where cuts can be made. Maybe we don't need to hire someone quite right now. Just don't be frivolous. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jessie Ann Green. I know that I tend to be a voice of. I don't know, I just, I like to save money wherever I can. And so as I look through this and just see how government operates, like I used to. Work for the county and it always drove me crazy how there'd be thousands of extra dollars at the end of the year that we just had to spend on something because we just had to spend it. And so I know that you're in a hard position because you have to follow protocol with a lot of things. But I also just urge you, like she said, to listen to residents and get more feedback. A lot of these things, I just have questions on more than anything, like I just don't understand. So one thing with human resources, I just saw that there was a big jump in operations and maintenance. And I wondered if you guys can just give more transparency as far as what these costs are for. That was like a close to fifty thousand dollar increase. And then on the cemetery, same thing, like I just wasn't sure. There's a twenty thousand dollar allotment for a survey, so I wasn't sure if that was just surveying the property or what that entailed. With the library, the twenty twenty two adopted budget is pretty, close to double what the twenty twenty pretty close to double what the twenty twenty-one adopted budget was for compensation and benefits. So I don't know how many people were having to pay, but that just seemed like a really big jump too. And then with Parks and Recreation. Let me see. The debt service, I wasn't sure what that means. There's a a large amount of money that is being budgeted for that as well, over a million dollars. So I don't understand what a lot of these things are and I'm sure you've gone into detail about a lot of them. And then on the Capital Projects Budget Summary, the Downtown Master Plan, the seventy-five thousand dollars to eighty-five thousand dollars, I just again wasn't sure what that is necessary for. And then I had a few questions on that page. So the Economic Development Study was eighty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one. And so that's not even a part of the twenty twenty-two budget, but I just wasn't sure what that entailed as well. And then the pavement study, that seemed kind of ridiculous to me, but I don't know if that's a need as well. Forty-four thousand dollars for a pavement study. I don't know if that's just them having to verify that our roads are bad or, you know, I don't know what that means. But yeah, I just, I'm just asking for greater transparency with all of the spending and I know this is a huge sum of money, so you guys have to look at things very carefully and I'm sure that everyone has done that, but if you could just explain that to us as residents where these large sums of money are going, that would be awesome. So, thank you.
Jessie, if you have additional questions, feel free to email those to me and we can get you answered or I can have you come in and we can talk them through. Yeah, because I think we can, I think we can answer a lot of those questions and explain why, why certain things are needed. And I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and Judy and I can sit down and talk to you about that. So feel free to reach out.
That goes for everyone.
Very true. Jessie's just at the podium.
And I'm always the obnoxious one, like, can't we spend less? I don't know.
Good questions. It's all fine.
Okay, I'm done writing.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to come up?
Hello, Mario Canyana's forty-one oh one, Crenston Ten Lane. I would just like to say thank you to each and every one of you board members for all your work. Just had one question. I was wondering, does the town have a grant writer specifically looking for grants for the town? Not necessarily with the Main Street project, but the town administration, is there somebody who works on grants? That's solely their job?
We do contract with an individual who is trying to track down grants for us, finding what we are what we qualify for. There's a lot of grants out there that we don't qualify for, for a variety of reasons, but we do have someone that's helping us with that. He is, we did not feel it should be a full-time position for the town, but we did contract with someone who was doing that work for us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming, Warren. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public meeting at this time. If anyone else is coming up. Real quick, thank you for your comments. I got written down. Trustee Gator's got a lot of them written down. We'll pass them through and, you know, we're gonna go through it one more time, make sure there's no Xs that stick out. Okay, it's not over, so. All right. What are you looking for else tonight?
I'd like to have a motion for permission to use the American Rescue Funds inside of the Water Fund. And that would be for the infrastructure of the plant.
Any thoughts on that?
Trustee Kenny at the prior meeting had asked some really good questions in conjunction with Trustee Gator about what are the opportunities that we have to maximize those funds for a variety of projects. And we sat down with Patty during our weekly update meeting and Trustee Kenny is comfortable with the funds being allocated solely to this project. After we talked about it and discussed kind of the rules and barriers, it wasn't as some of the other projects that we've been considering in the work sessions weren't applicable for this grant. So she, after much discussion, she did give permission for me to share that she is comfortable with moving forward with those funds being allocated specifically to our water treatment plant projects.
Okay, okay, I take it you are too?
Yes.
What do you think, Don?
No, it's good. I don't have an issue. I never had an issue. I just wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to have the conversation before I just got allocated there. So I don't have any issue with putting those funds towards the water treatment plant.
Anything we can put towards that expense would be good. So you're looking for a motion to do that?
So we're good. Thank you so much.
Want to make that motion?
I move that we utilize the American Rescue Act funds towards our water Utility Enterprise Fund for the purpose of paying for the water treatment plant expansion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Before we move on, we did have someone online, Kelly Cooper's on Zoom and had raised her hand and wanted to make a public comment. I was wondering if that would be entertained.
So I would say no, because we, I appreciate that Ms. Cooper probably has some good input to share, but this has not been opened up to everyone. We've stated publicly on the agenda that there will not be public comment, so unless we're gonna open that up to everyone, which we can't do at this point, I would, I would lean towards we need to stick with what we had said.
I'd have to agree. I think I gotta agree. Sorry about that.
Ms. Cooper, could you please email your comments to us? Because I would like to hear what you have to say. We just need to make sure that we're not making different changes for other people. So if you could send that over to us, I would greatly appreciate it.
Hey. We're done with item two. Move on, item three. This is a request for a special meeting on November sixteen, twenty twenty-one. Patty, you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Hi there, Mayor and Trustees, Patty Garcia Town Administrator. So this is a formal request for a special meeting on November sixteenth. We don't normally go through this process and bring it to a public meeting. But because the budget will be discussed at that meeting, I wanted to make sure there was full transparency in that process. There is a letter for you to sign, which were required by state statute to have you have the mayor actually call for the special meeting and sign and make that request and get support from the rest of the board members. So this is just that formal request and would request a motion to have a special meeting on November sixteenth.
To discuss the budget and?
To discuss the budget, to have evaluations for the town administrator and the town attorney and potentially one other agenda item that we will discuss in a moment.
What time?
Six thirty PM. Thank you, Trustee McDonald. Here at the Leaper Center.
This is a clarification. We typically do meet on the third Tuesday. It's just not a business meeting, so this will just be taking that work session and actually making that into a business meeting.
That was good. That was lucky. Okay, normally, that's a whole new one. All right. Well. It's just a request, right?
I'd pray for a motion.
Can I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve convening for a special meeting of the town of our Board of Trustees on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM at the Leaper Center.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, okay. Item four, resolution number thirty-one twenty twenty-one, we're we're removing this item from the agenda tonight, though. It's possibly, right?
Yes, this is, at the last meeting, it, the feedback from the trustees was they felt it was important that there was a full board to have that discussion in order and to have the vote. We should have a full board at the next meeting on November sixteenth, so staff would request that we would postpone this item to the November sixteenth special meeting.
Just as a quick clarification on that, when we initially had tabled the item, myself and Trustee McDonald tabled that item to tonight, thinking that we would have a board. We found out after having approved the item that one of the other board members would not be here tonight. So that's the reason that we're requesting the move again. So I think that it would be good to move that to the sixteenth on that special meeting so that we can get this addressed. We'll all be here and we can get it done.
Yes, please.
Okay, I get a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we table resolution number thirty-one twenty twenty-one, a resolution establishing non-residential water rate charges for Wellington Water Enterprise Water Utility Use to the November sixteenth special meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay, does it for action items tonight, but we're gonna have a big meeting. Next meeting, so. You know, it's all be ready. It's gonna be big. All right, we're under some reports. Town Attorney, got anything else for us tonight?
Nothing else for you tonight.
Okay, town administrator, anything quick?
No report.
Anything from staff back there that we need to talk about? Okay. Board members? Think I'll kick this one off real quick. It's a lot going on here between today, tomorrow and eleventh through the fourteenth. Lot of good stuff. There's Veterans Day celebration put on by the American Legion of Colorado Brewing and the barbecue is a big deal. And we're gonna read some names Thursday night, right? I haven't seen the roster for that, but board members have been requested to come and read names at five thirty. That's gonna look, that's gonna look good. I mean, that's just a big deal. The flyovers at eleven eleven from some F fifteens. This is gonna be a big deal, so I encourage everybody to come out on Main Street on November eleventh, about, about eleven o'clock. They're only going to five towns in the state and we're one of them, so that's pretty cool. The other thing I wanted to say was, you know, I got this note from the Main Street Department today that Wellington's Main Street Program was selected by the other twenty-three Colorado Main Street Programs as a Colorado Main Street Program of the Year. Wow, hats off to you guys, okay? Now we just need that money, all right? That we, they didn't give us. But that right there sets the stage for it, so you're doing a great job. Need to thank you and Callie very much, okay? You guys are just doing great. That's all I got. Anyone else?
Two items, they're both be quick. So first off, I did want to thank all the trustees and the mayor for coming out to our veterans pancake breakfast on Saturday that the CAC held. It was a good turnout. We actually had all of the tables full, right as we had another family coming in that there were no seats left, someone else had just left. So we had a really good turnout and it meant a lot to have representatives from our local government there just to thank the veterans. So just want to thank each and every one of you for making time to come out for that. Really was a great thing, so appreciate you guys doing that. And then I also wanted to just give you guys an update. So back probably two and a half months ago, the mayor, myself and Ms. Garcia met with some representatives of our Hispanic community to discuss some of the challenges and issues going through that. I have continued to be in touch with the two women who have been really kind of leading the charge and trying to connect with that. One of the major concerns they had is in regards to transportation between here and Fort Collins. And we have been working out, what are some ways that we can find a way to do a study to see how many people would actually utilize some sort of transportation to try and work with the county, Fort Collins, to see if we can make something happen. So I just met with them this last week and we have put together basically a sample survey. They're approving that right now and then I'm gonna, I think I provide that to Ms. Garcia. And if you'd like, I can pass it out to the board. And basically, just to find out if something were available, would people use it? Would it be residents of Wellington, residents of Laramore County? So that we can then work with the county to say, hey, how can we work together to find something like this? So I just wanted to give you guys an update on that. We're continuing to work on that and then hopefully, once we get all the details worked out, that survey will be put out, we'll collect information on that and then we'll move from there.
Is it just Wellington or you're going to the county in Fort Collins with it too?
No, so it's gonna be focused in on anybody that we can get to take it. We're not, we're, we basically have one of the questions is whether people live in Wellington or outside of. And not to say, if you don't live outside Wellington, you can't answer the survey, we just need to know, because if, a lot of people might be right around Wellington, but they're not in the city limits. And so we need to know that, so when we have these numbers, we can go back to the Laramore County and say, hey, we have a large number of county residents and city residents who would like to see something. Can we work together to find a way to make this happen? So it's not just us trying to make it happen, but us working with county. Okay. So and the county commissioners were at our last meeting, so they're aware of this as a need as well, so.
They've been talking about it for a long time, too, so let's see if generates any action. Right? Good, all right. All right, that's it for board reports. We got an executive session tonight. This is for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators pursuant to section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E CRS regarding negotiations with North Pooter Irrigation Company as required by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two dash D point five two A and two E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through February seventh, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion to go on executive session?
So moved at seven thirty-five PM.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Jerome?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes, thank you for coming, folks. Appreciate all your input. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I did not see, no, I didn't see it. Okay, so you have my contact information, but I'm free on Monday. If you have any time or if it needs to be meet this evening or something, just let me know. We're all about education, so, so we want to be there to help. Okay, thank you. See you later, Jessie. We should not.